All dressed up for nothing. All right, call this meeting in order. Commissioner Lee.
Dear Lord, grant us the power to govern with justice and righteousness, protect our nation from harm, both internally and externally, strengthen the bonds of unity among our people, and help us to strive for the common good. We pray for economic prosperity, social harmony, and spiritual revival within our nation. May our leaders and our citizens be guided by your truth and live in obedience to your word. Amen.
Amen.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langley.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Northrup.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Yep.
Commissioner Grace.
Here.
Commissioner Barrera.
Here.
Commissioner Marquette.
Here.
And Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Welcome, everybody. Before I open the floor for public comment, just remind everybody you have three minutes, and this will be for agenda items only. Anything that you want after that will be towards the end of the meeting. So the floor is now open. Floor is now closed for public comment. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Chair Jones.
Yep. He's first.
I defer to Commissioner Barrera.
All right.
We need to add to the under new business two appointments to the historical commission.
The ones that we have here on the desk.
Yep, Diana McGrew and Derek Carr.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
So Mr. Chair, so we have under new business one and two. So Commissioner Barrera would be number three under new business?
Yep.
Okay, so I would like to add number four, and that will be a discussion, a discussion to change the date, or rather, the time of the June 26 meeting. And I can explain that when we get to it. And then also, that would be number three under new business?
Number four. Number four.
Number four. Yeah, okay. Number five under new business. So we have a number of staff who have made great achievements, and they've gone above and beyond, and I believe it is important to acknowledge them. So we would like to plan, make a plan to acknowledge them at an upcoming meeting. So I'd like to add-
Talk about that.
Yes, sir. I'd like to talk about that.
All right, anybody else had anything else? All right, let me get back to my... Commissioner Grace.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion on the floor in support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Wow, that mug hit hard. All right, number eight, letter H, public hearing, need a motion to open to-
Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move to open the truth and taxation public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor in support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's better. All right, floor is open for public hearing, for anybody that needs to come up and talk. Sorry to disappoint you others that were here for something else, but it got fixed. Few more seconds. All right, let's-
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move to close the truth and taxation public hearing.
Second.
Motion on the floor in support, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Find us funny, there's a few people that are in the audience that are chairs and supervisors, and they get to see me. Surprised they haven't heckled me yet. Any recognitions? All right, ma'am, you're up. Push the red button on the-
This one?
Yep, that one. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Barbara Gordon, and I am the Director of Cass District Library. In front of you, I've handed out our newly published 2024 annual report. It's sitting on your ledge, like right above your seat there. I would just like to go over a couple of highlights for you and give you a little bit of an update about what the district library has been up to. This is also my last meeting as Director of Cass District Library, so I'd like to just leave on a good note for you all. So I'll get started. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here and to speak with you this evening. As the report shows, Cass District Library continues to serve as a vital and growing resource for our community. Last year, our five branches welcomed over 63,000 visitors, and we checked out nearly 136,000 items. We issued 900 new library cards, and we saw a remarkable 501% increase in program attendance since the pandemic. This is an extraordinary testament, I think, to our reach and our relevance here locally. The library value calculator estimates that our services have saved patrons in Cass County more than $2 million just in 2024 alone. And these savings come through borrowed books, downloaded materials, public computer use, Wi-Fi use, and educational programs that would otherwise cost residents money that many do not have to spend. In short, our libraries return far more than they cost in every measurable way. Despite these successes, our library system remains one of the most underfunded of its size in the entire state of Michigan. And yet, for decades, we have been diligent and responsible stewards, not only of the public trust, but also of the public dollars that are entrusted to us every year through our millage. This year, we are so proud to be nearing the completion of the Edwardsburg Branch Building Project, this county's first new public library in decades. Funded through a voter-approved millage, this nearly $6 million project is a clear demonstration of this community's support for public library services. The main branch has also served the community well, and we have stretched every resource to ensure it remains functional, welcoming, and accessible. The main branch here in Cassopolis is our busiest branch. I want to clearly state that the main branch building has never been owned by the Cass District Library. It is a Cass County-owned property. However, we have proudly and fully covered its maintenance expenses since the day it opened. Some of you may recall that we completed our first facilities master plan in 2021. At that time, the main branch had more than $600,000 in deferred maintenance. Despite investing over $100,000 in that building since then, our most recent assessment, delivered just last month by Intersect Studio, puts that number at almost $900,000. The need is growing faster than our ability to keep up, even with prudent and thoughtful investment. In public service, we are all called to look beyond personal politics and focus on what best serves the community. I respectfully urge this board to consider the long-term interests of all Cass County residents, each of whom has access to CDL facilities and collections. The time is approaching for a final decision about the future of 319M62, and I encourage you to work collaboratively with the library board to create a plan that meets the needs of this community, not just today, but for generations to come. As our annual report makes clear, this community values its libraries. They are well-used, well-loved, and they're growing. We are busier than ever. Let's ensure that we can continue to meet that demand with facilities that reflect the importance of the services that we provide. And as I said before, this is my final appearance before you as Director of Cass District Library. I want to express my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to serve the people of Cass County. It's been a real honor. Thank you for your time, and again, for your support of our county libraries.
Hold on.
Thank you.
Hold on. Oh, you don't get away that easy. So I have a couple of questions. One, do you all have anybody in mind that will take your place?
The library board is doing a national search. They've hired a search firm to lead that. It's been posted for about three weeks now. We do have an interim director that's been named, Rhonda Belcher. She's currently the Edwardsburg Branch Manager. She and I have been working closely over the last couple of weeks. My last day is June 13th, and after next Friday, Rhonda will be in charge, as it were.
So you've given us the numbers here, and you all have opened up the new branch in Edwardsburg, you know, through the grants and all that. We own, like you said, we own the, we own the library. When you urge us to do what's necessary for the citizens, that was kind of broad, and this isn't really, is there a plan from the library board?
Well, I'm not on the library board, so I, you know, I hesitate to sort of speak for them on this matter, but this has been an issue that I think, as you know, has gone back and forth between the district library and the county for 25, 26 years. And the argument has always been that the Cass District Library really feels like we need full and complete ownership of that building. We feel strongly that we could pass another millage. However, we cannot issue bonds on a property that we do not legally own.
Right.
At the same time, it seems imprudent to pay a high cost for that building when it's nearing $1 million in deferred maintenance. I don't see how that serves any taxpayer here in the county.
And I think, I think we don't, doesn't the county provide the money for the maintenance on that, or no?
No.
Doesn't, we do the insurance.
And we reimburse you.
Yeah, we do, yeah. And do they reimburse us for the insurance? Okay.
And there have been several, as you can imagine, expensive upgrades that have been needed. It's an aging facility. We have footed the bill for everything.
And it was brought up two years ago or so that we were gonna sell, it was way before that to, for you all to purchase the building from us, but I would need to ask the finance director and interim administrator, that, that library is part of our borrowing power, I would suppose? Is that a good word for it? Or one of our assets in the county? You're not on?
I mean, it is an asset of ours, yeah. We don't borrow too much, so I mean, I don't know how much that weighs in on it. There's a lot of things that go into that.
Because we've had it appraised a few years ago, and at that point, it was about $1.2 million, you know, and probably now, it might be worth a little bit more. So if that is an asset of ours, you know, I don't know. I don't know how that would affect us, but we can talk about that with the new-
Yeah, with the new director.
Yeah.
I think we've done our, we've done our due diligence in terms of going out and getting a neutral input, a neutral study done of that space, so we know now exactly what it would cost, just to kind of get it up to snuff, to put it on the market. That's not counting the additional many millions it would need to bring it up to modern library service standards.
Maybe we can revisit that and-
Well, that, that was my point of this, to really encourage this board to think about the, the future of that building. And if it's, if it's not always going to be the library, then how are we going to continue to provide these services that people are using?
There's a lot of citizens worried that that library, if you, if we would sell it to you all, and then you all would sell it, that it would end up being a dispensary or something that doesn't fit between the sheriff department and the medical health facility that's there, you know, so that's a concern of all the citizens as well.
But there's lots of really creative legal ways to address that.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm the chair of this board, and Eileen Tony is the president of that board, so if you could reach out to her and have her get in contact with me, I'm sure we can have a discussion on it. A friendly, a friendly one.
Yeah, I think that would be great. I think that would benefit everyone, all parties involved.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lawrence, you are up.
Proposed consent agenda, I make a motion to approve M-74-2025 through M-89 through dash 2025 with a one-time vote.
Second.
Motion on the floor in support, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to poll M-80-2025. I'm still seeking more information on that. We can either vote on it separately or table it for a later date.
Pull that out and put it under new business?
We can't do it that way.
What you need to do-
You can't just pull it. You would, at this point, because we've already passed the agenda, it's been approved, you could move to amend it at this point and try and get it removed that way, but then we'd have to vote on that fully through, because it's already passed as part of the, through the consent agenda, or it's already passed as the agenda presented. You'd have to try and make amendment, and then we would vote on the amendment to remove it.
I'll let it go.
All right. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Northrup?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yep.
Commissioner Grace?
No.
Commissioner Barrera?
Yes.
Commissioner Marquette?
No.
And Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
All right, consent agenda passes. District one?
On nothing at this time.
District two?
Nothing at this time.
District three?
Nothing.
For me and District four, got a new clock on the wall. That has nothing to do with our district, but, but me as chair of the board, I was asked to put a clock on the wall back there. And, yeah, it, it's good. That way, we're not staring at our phones. Oh, another point of contention is I've been approached about, as chair of the Board of Commissioners, about the Michigan State Annex and the extension and its relationship with the Fair Board. It's been an ongoing issue for several years, so as the leader of this board, I'm gonna dig into it, and I'm just letting the board members know and the public know that I'm on it, and we're gonna find out what's going on, and we're gonna hope to work together and find a solution for everybody. All right? District five?
The only thing I can report, we located a new executive director for Woodlands. We made an offer today. We're just waiting for the response. Went through many candidates, but today, we had a meeting with him and offered a contract, so that should be coming forth.
All right.
Thank you.
District six?
I have nothing to report.
Seven, of course, come on.
Okay, okay. So my report, for this past month, two of the really big boards that I serve on, number one, the Board of Health, and two, the Materials Management Committee, both of them did not have quorums. And it gives me the opportunity to tell people, if you are on a board of commission, how important it is that you show up, because we had, we go, and we can't do anything because there isn't a quorum. I will say this, at the Board of Health, though, new, a new area has come available, so the Board of Health is gonna be moving, in the snow building in Duwadeak, it's gonna be moving from upstairs to downstairs. There's some very, a very nice area, and it's quite a bit larger, and we did get to, we did get to have a tour of that. And then also, because of the reopening of the Palisades, the Health Department has to do, it's called a decontamination training. And so they did that training on May 28th. And the Materials Management Committee, again, there wasn't a forum there, but we had presentation from hydroaluminum, green earth electronics, as well as from a composting facility called Organicycle. And we, that's the first time we've had anything on composting, and it was probably one of the most interesting things that we had. And then I went to NATS. That was last week, and for everybody's benefit, NATS is Niles Area Transportation Study. It serves Howard Township, Milton Township, the Village of Edwardsburg, Ontua Township, and Mason Township. And this year, the Transportation Improvement Plan has received $31.3 million in federal funds for Cass and Marion Counties. And the Cass County Road Commission received a grant for culverts. Then I brought this transportation improvement program. I brought this study that we have. It's from 2026 to 2029, and for the benefit of the commissioners, I'll leave it on the desk in that room, so if you have time and you want to take a look and see what roads in the NATS area are spent money on and are gonna get work done, which I always try to report on anyway. So that'll be there. And then finally, the Cass County Planning Commission met May 28th, and we approved three ordinance changes for Howard Township, and we did a final review of the master plan before the 60-day period where it will be available for comment. And this, you all will receive copies, and we should be getting those final copies next month at the Planning Commission meeting. And that's it.
All right. Well, for the Health Department meeting, I couldn't have made it there because I was in the hospital from an Iraq injury, but me and the vice chair here are ex de facto members of every county board and voting members. So if there is a projected need for a quorum, you all can give either or both of us a call, and we can be there as voting members to establish a quorum for especially the important board meetings, so we can continue the, the business of the county.
Thank you.
I'm sure me and them will be there as long as we're not in another meeting.
Okay, thank you. That, that's a great idea. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Lee, you gotta top that.
Yeah, just to reiterate what Commissioner Grace said, that we had a good meeting at Woodlands, quite a long one, but I think we picked a good candidate to offer that to. Coming down the pipe, like, it looks like, mental health as a whole, they're gonna be revamping that throughout the whole state. Hopefully, with how it's looking, that will result in more dollars flowing to the counties, to the facilities that need that money, but that's still kind of, they're still working through how they want to handle that. So I would expect to see quite a bit of change on the mental health side and the money and how that moves from the state down here in the near future.
Thank you. All right, administrators' report.
The reports in the packet, just to highlight a few things. Very, very busy right now, working on the health insurance renewal for the employees. The class compensation study results should be out very soon to all of you, so we can have some of those discussions on where we go with those results. Finishing up an IRS audit from back in 2021, that came up not too recently. Finishing up our liability insurance renewal right now and working through budgets.
Any questions for interim administrator? All right, county partners, you are up. Think you're the only one here.
Thank you. Corey Blyvis with Casconi Conservation District. I wanted to let you know that we did hold interviews today for the new district manager, which will be taking over 30 hours, and part of my, I think I had mentioned this last time, part of my role since I'll be stepping back. And we have more interviews tomorrow, but they look really good, so I'm excited about having someone new in and expanding the operations side of the district. I'll, SESC, regarding SESC, we did have 21, and that's soil erosion and sediment control, for those who don't know. We had 21 permits issued in May. Our year to date is 147, so at this rate, we're definitely looking at over 200 permits for the year, so we'll have a successful year. Our financials are tight, so I think we're gonna have a larger permit soon, and that might bring us up, but it's close, but we're making ends meet there. We have several violations. It's springtime, big rains, people not knowing what they're supposed to do, so we've been following up on those. And I've been working a little bit with Eagle to make sure that we cover and follow the violation guidelines that you approved last time. That's what we need to do to make sure we pass the audit. So we saw it has been assigned to make sure that we're doing all of those violation follow-ups and that we can schedule the final inspections with Eagle to be finished with that part. and that we can schedule the final inspections with Eagle to be finished with that part. I hope that would happen in the next month or so. Uh, I do wanna say that Justin has done over eighty inspections, uh, last month, even while helping to get the GIS, um, data back in our survey one-two-three, which is a new way for us to do our inspections. It's pretty awesome. Him and Alex from GIS have been working hard. They've been, GIS department has been awesomely helping us with that. And I'm, it's, it is exciting. It makes it very different and, um, more, uh, the reporting back to the custo, the, the residents is very clear and clean, and I, I really like the way it works. So I just have to learn how to use it on my phone a little bit better, so I save all the photos when I do it. Our tree sale was in, the end of April. I'm still finalizing some of the numbers. Uh, but it looks like we're gonna be profiting around ten thousand dollars. We distributed over six thousand, uh, trees and plants. And people are trying to make sure they protect those plants, 'cause I had kind of a record number of five-hundred-and-forty-nine flags sold. And that kinda stuck out, so I thought I'd mention it. Barion County is interviewing for, uh, the new regenerative ag technician since Brenda Mitchell left us. And that person also serves Cass County, and we need that agricultural support in our office. We have had the surrounding meat technicians come in and pick up some cost-share supplies, so they are serving our farms, uh, here, so that's good to know, uh, that that's continued to work out okay. We have begun using the water testing equipment. I'm not quite ready to open it up for everybody to bring their water to test, uh, 'cause it took quite a long time to calibrate and make sure it's all working correct. But I hope to be able to have, announce a few days coming up. We did invasive species polls at, uh, Dr. Lawless Park. And thanks to the efforts of, um, oh, Garlic Mustard and Dame's Rocket, but thanks to the efforts of the Olson family from Maple Row, they have a big clan, and they came in and we did, uh, over two-hundred pounds the one day. And, uh, it was, it made quite a splash, so I'm looking forward to doing some more of those projects. Tom Enright coordinated another great Marcellus eighth-grade school program at Russ Forest, and he will be leading our hike with a naturalist on June seventeenth. At Russ Forest again, it's a macro-invertebrate, uh, study, creek study. Uh, that creek is clean, and, and we can tell that by what we find within the creek. And I'm sure that, that we're gonna find that same thing, um, on June seventeenth. We did have a regional CISM, uh, strategic planning meeting last month, and we're open to any suggestions and comments, things that you need the CISM to do. We're updating that, uh, s- strategic plan, 'cause it hadn't been updated since they first formed. The CISM reaches Cass, Bar- Barion, and Van Barion County. And let's see, the last thing, Friday, June twenty-seventh, at two P.M., at Big Fish Lake, DNR Public Access. We'll have a group there with the CISM and our SEFC, uh, inspectors to do what they call a landing blitz and educate people who are coming in and out of the lake about, uh, protecting the lake from invasive species. And a lot of times residents will come around, so we talk to them about natural shoreline care, too. And it works out pretty good, so we'll hope for good weather on, uh, that day. And it'll be our first time at Big Fish Lake, so. Any questions for me?
Yes, ma'am. For, uh, my other job that me and you talk about a lot, I've been getting some complaints about, uh, runoff of people's gutters onto other people's property. And in my office, I've been sending them the notice and the ordinance and the state law about that. Does your office need a copy of that?
Sure, please send it to me.
Okay.
I do advise, when we review plans, I try to help alleviate that. You know, I ask about what they're doing, 'cause we don't wanna change the historic flow of water.
Right. And this is mainly on Eagle Lake, and there's a couple, it's summertime, and it's that time of year. So I'll, I'll make sure to email them to you. And we can work together still on that. Thank you. Anybody else?
I just, um, you're gonna stick around?
Yes. Afterwards, no problem.
Thank you, Cory. Drain commissioner.
Two and a half years to get through a soil erosion audit for a little old Cass County seems excessive, anyway. Board chairs understands challenges Drain Commissioners facing with Eagle right now. Next week, uh, nine-to-five at the Road Commission, we're holding. They have a review of apportements on a project that's about five years into making. Commissioner Northrup, uh, Newburgh's getting hit pretty well on this. I've talked to the supervisor, they're coming. So anybody in, uh, Newburgh that, you know, if they reach out, they can come in, nine-to-five, we'll be there with the engineers, I'll be there. And, uh, you know, Newburgh's not used to these drain assessments. However, this is a project in Saint Joe County involving Corey Lake, Long, Mud, Kaiser. It's a whole system. There's a ton of water over there, and it's a watershed project. It's a watershed district. So anyway, uh, probate court's been giving some calls, et cetera, so we're working through that. Judges handled that quite well for me. So anyway, if you get any, and if you wanna stop in. Nine-to-five, we'll be there. You can check out, see how it works. Uh, Road Commission there in their main headquarters, so they're, um, nice enough to put me up. One of the things I was gonna mention about the main branch library, Drain Office has held some meetings there before, too. Uh, they have a room there, Historical Society, others that have invited us in, so, uh, uh, I think the libraries, well, first off, I'm from Edwardsburg, we're very excited about that one. And it's gonna be a community asset, and that's kind of the way I see these things. I want you to kind of keep that in mind, and whatever's gonna happen with that building is, that's, she really summed it up quite well, um, Ms. Gordon, that it really is a community asset. So anyway, thanks.
Thanks, sir. Prosecutor Fitz. He's out and about. Treasury Anderson.
Turned it off? Thank you. I would like to just give a short, uh, My Hope Program update for the Cass County Land Bank Authority. I'm pleased to share that we have completed all the energy efficiency home upgrades through the My Hope Program and are now in the process of officially closing the grant. The Cass County Land Bank was recently honored with two statewide recognitions. The twenty-twenty-five Regional Impact Award, as well as the Success in Monitoring Award. In total, one-point-nine million dollars was awarded to Cass County, the City of Duwodjak, and the Village of Cassopolis, out of just twenty-three million statewide. That speaks volumes about the strength of our partnership and the impact we've made on here locally. Clerk Register McMichael and Chair Jones are both members of the Cass County Land Bank Authority, and they will pass around a flyer that we put together that highlights the results and the community benefit of the program in Cass County. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I think Judge Beeler is busy as well. Sheriff.
If you remember, last September, Sheriff Benke brought a resolution in front of you for two of our deputies that risked their lives pulling two men out of a burning car at Polkagan and Daly Road. Well, I took that a step further and submitted them to the Michigan Sheriff's Association for Medal of Honor, which they were awarded last Sunday at the Sheriff's Conference in front of a couple hundred people. Very proud to have been there with them. Um, they were recognized for putting their lives at risk to save those two individuals. So just wanted to let you know that, that you guys did it, but then we did it again at the, at the state level, so. Attended Kalamazoo, Kellogg Community College last night for graduation of three deputies that, um, I was happy to go up there and pin on stage, and they've all passed their state tests. And will be starting on the road next week, so you'll see three no, more new faces. Plus, we have our young lady that was injured in the academy, um, a couple months ago, that has now healed. It is out. So four, four people in FTO right now. So you'll see, uh, cars doubled up during the day and in the evening, and that's why. Uh, currently have two at LMC, which are doing fantastic. And we'll have two more, um, this fall back at Kellogg. And once those two graduate, we'll be better than we've ever been in the last four or five years. So we're gonna be in really good shape here.
That's great.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. The Monica McMichael. Thank you all. All right, new business. I need to amend. I moved that we amend M-dash-ninety-dash-twenty-five. And in that contract, under section thirteen, it has three thousand dollars. I would like to amend it to five thousand dollars. ISO move.
What page?
It's, um, I don't know what page it is.
Okay.
It's section thirteen, under moving expenses. Page eight.
Okay, page eight of twelve. Okay, so three thousand, rather, uh, five thousand rather than three?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
ISO move.
Support.
That motion on the floor in support for the amendment, any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Amendment passes. So, M-ninety, twenty-two-five, as amended.
You need a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I move, uh, to approve motion M-dash-ninety-dash-twenty-two-five.
Motion on the floor in support, any other discussion? I will say that I, I, uh, had a hand in this contract, as lo, as well as Jen and Beth and several other people, and I appreciate you all's input in this, and it was a lot of hard work. And this, I've done some of them before, but this one hits a little bit home, 'cause it affects me directly and us directly. And I changed it from three to five thousand dollars, 'cause at the time when we had started the negotiations, we had a house picked out, or short-term rental, or long-term rental. That fell through, and then after negotiations, we found another place, but it was a little bit more expensive. So to show our support to our new administrator, I figured that would be appropriate. All right. Did I vote yet? Did we vote yet? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Number two, M-ninety-one-dash-twenty-two-five, should be easy. We need to schedule a budget meeting. Yeah, we need a, I don't know, do we, do we need a motion for that, or is that just a discussion?
Um, so there was talk, um, a while back, when we talked about budgets, that you guys might be interested in having, um, conversations with the department heads and elected officials again. So we wanted to kind of give that date on the books right away. And we didn't know if the July seventeenth meeting, starting that, or having the budget meetings right before that meeting, so maybe starting at like two and three, and have everyone available, so you guys can kind of ask questions and go over, um, them with the departments and the electeds.
That would work for me, 'cause that's a normal meeting day. And it's already a meeting day for us.
So maybe like two o'clock, three o'clock? I don't know how much time you guys are gonna want with everyone.
Do we need a motion for that, or would everybody just show up at two o'clock?
Two o'clock?
Are we just doing one meeting, or are we doing?
Well, we're doing the budget meeting, and then we'll have the cow at five o'clock.
But we're just doing one budget meeting. It's like a series of budget meetings. It's just gonna be like a kickoff kind of thing.
Kind of a kickoff. It gives you guys time to talk and ask any questions you might have with the elected officials and the department heads. Anything new that might be going on, extra you might see, um, or maybe it just might be business as usual.
I mean, I think a couple hours could probably suffice if we start at three o'clock that day.
Three?
Three? Anybody else got any suggestion? Three o'clock going once, twice, sold. So we can just move past that one. All right, number three.
So number three, we met with the appointments committee today, and because of our timing schedule with moving the meeting, the next business meeting, uh, we're, it wasn't gonna work out for us to move from the cow to the BLC meeting to get it approved that the Historical Commission can meet. So therefore, we're just kind of fast-tracking the two applications that we've got. That's Diana McGrew and Derek Carr, uh, to be on the Historical Committee so that they can go ahead and get their mo, their meetings back in order. Also, we do need a third applicant for the Historical Committee, just putting that out there. Until then, I do think that we're probably gonna need a chair or vice chair to go to the next meeting so that they can meet, um, and not have any issues. With all that being said, I move to appoint Diana McGrew and Derek Carr to the Cass County Historical Commission, to terms ending July first, twenty-twenty-eight.
Second.
Motion on the floor in support, any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Number four.
I'm sorry, I have a question. I'm sorry.
You're good.
I thought it says he's applying for the Community Corrections.
No, he's, he's done both.
Well, he says Historical Commission, but I thought we were, I thought it says the board applied for Community Corrections. So, and then he said he was interested in the historical.
I guess the way that we're looking at the application potentially does show the board that he was applying for was the Community Corrections Advisory Board, but also interested in serving in other boards, Historical Commission if available, and we have three open spots.
Okay, so.
It worked out either way.
Thank you. And thanks for doing this, so they have a coin.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, let, let one of us know when it is, that way we can.
The second Tuesday?
Thursday. Second Thursday.
Second Thursday?
All right, we'll get it. All right, number four, that's you, Commissioner Marchetti?
Yes, okay, so, um, we changed, of course, because, uh, June nineteenth is a holiday, so we changed the date to June twenty-sixth. And, um, Market, uh, Market One, uh, they had, um, an event several months ago, which turned out to be the same night as one of our meetings, and I really chewed them up for that. So now, they sent, they set this event way ahead and made sure it wasn't, they looked at our calendar, and we were gonna meet on June nineteenth, so they made their meeting June twenty-sixth. So, um, what I'm asking is, and it's in South Haven, by the way, and we've all been invited, every one of us, and many of you out there I know have been invited as well. So if we could change our meeting to four o'clock, that starts at five. And if we could change our meeting to four o'clock, um, people who plan to attend could attend. If we had to wait till five o'clock, it, we'd be rather late.
Are you predicting that we'll be done in time?
Hope so.
That's fine with me.
So I would like to make a motion that, um, we change the time of the June twenty-sixth meeting to four o'clock.
Second.
Motion on the floor in support, any discussion? Here any not in, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
You are still up, number five.
Okay, so, uh, as I said before, we have a whole bunch of people, and I, I can look in this room and I can see people that need to be, that have done, gone above and beyond. And we need to acknowledge that. We have our, we have our challenge coins. And so, um, and Jen and I have talked about it. And, uh, each one of you, you, we all know who many people are who have, who've gone above and beyond and have achieved certain things. They, as an example, we have two, um, we, two heroes that we learned about tonight. So, um, I would like to, um, set aside one of our meeting nights as a night to acknowledge any staff member or any employee who has gone above and beyond. And I'll get together with, I'll get together with, um, with Jen and with Beth and anybody else, and we'll set it up. And if you have any suggestions for anybody, please tell me. I've got a list about six people already. So if you could, if you know of somebody, as I said, Clint, we've got these two, we got, we have these two heroes. Definitely, we, the board needs to acknowledge them as well as the whole state. So, um, that, that's, that's gonna be the first two on, on the list.
So is that a motion? Or is this a suggestion?
It's, uh, well, I thought maybe we would discuss it, you know, I, I can make a motion if you want.
Well, my, my parliamentarian is staring at me, waiting for me to start discussing without having a motion on the floor. If he says it's okay, I will comment. All right, so you, you mentioned our coin. Does it have to be the coin, or it can be any acknowledgement?
It can be. That's a very good question. Um, doesn't have to be. I thought maybe we could print something out and, and have, because we can do that. Am I right, Jen? We can do that. We could. I right Jen, we can do that, we could print something out with someone's name and we could, we can fix it up to look real nice. Oh, good.
I think that's great that you want to do that again, but you guys did that already in September.
I know we did, I know.
You recognized them and gave them a resolution and I think they might have got a coin back in September, if I remember right.
But, but, but now they have statewide recognition, so, and they got an award, am I right?
Yes.
Okay, so, we acknowledge that they got the award and.
All right, I just wanted to make sure you knew that you had already really recognized them for this.
This is, this is for countywide employees, not just department heads, it's everybody in the county.
Yeah.
And remember, we had those, those little pin things that we don't pass out anymore and when I established the coin two years ago, I established it for the above and beyond and people in the, in the audience that have been in the military or Sheriff Department, there's a notorious thing where people get awards for just showing up and that's why I established the coin, that way, you know, if you're doing your job, you know, they went above and beyond, but if you're doing your job, we always kind of like, you know, you get an award for just doing your job, man, you know, but if we can do it to where it's actual recognition and it doesn't water down what we've done.
Right.
You know, as long as it doesn't water down the awards and the other achievements of the other employees, then I think it'd be a great idea, but I just want to be careful not to make it, eh, would you, oh, it's your turn this month, oh, it's your turn this month, we go around the horn, everybody's got the same thing, then it's not special anymore, you know?
Well, we have some people and I could, and I don't want to mention them right now, but we have some people through this whole search that we've done, that one person in particular, I think that's probably the way that person lives their life, but that person went above and beyond.
I bet you if we give them people some time off, that'd be a lot better than a coin.
I'm not going to do that. So I think, I think just a special thank you, you know, a special thank you, like you did this and we want to say thanks.
Yeah, and add a boy or an add a girl in public goes a long way.
We want you to know that we know how much work you have put into this.
Yes, ma'am.
That's one of the, as I say, I got about six people.
I'm on board, yeah, I'm on board.
Okay, all right.
All right, so we don't need an actual motion, we just, we just do it.
Okay.
We just do it.
Okay, so anything we need to do is set a date.
If we get suggestions in time, we can even have it printed out, something formed and it's up to, I would say it would be up to the individual commissioner whether or not they give a coin, one of their coins, because for the audience or for the public, I ordered a hundred last year and I gave ten to each of the commissioners and then I gave ten to the administrator and then I had an extra ten that I split between me and the, me and the vice chair. Once those coins are gone, they're gone and once I gave them to the commissioners, I gave it to them with the premise that they can do with them whatever they please, I don't control what they do, so if we let them decide what they want to do with their coins, you know, that would be cool, you know, all right?
Okay.
All right, moving on.
I got it done, all right.
Got it done.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner announcements or comments? District one. Oh, public comment, yeah, I forgot about that. So, yes, ma'am.
Oh, good. Hi.
Hello, everyone, Linda Preston, Supervisor, Polk Hagan Township. I just want to thank the Planning Commission for getting the land use plan to a near final completion. I attended many of the meetings and as being one of the townships, it was part of the plan. I'd hope that we are notified when that will be and what the next steps are for us, so.
Ambrosia, do you want to help us out here?
Yeah, and we're, how the townships would be affected that are involved in it.
You will get an email to let you know, just as we've been emailing every meeting, and let you know that there is a meeting at the end of the month, I think it's June twenty-fifth.
Mm-hmm.
And then you will, have you gotten the copy of the master plan that I shared?
No, I haven't heard from you in a while. All right, and I would just like to reinforce and let the commission know how important ambulance coverage is in our county and anything we can do to promote that and to stimulate it and make it even better would be wonderful.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Oh, Charlie.
Charlie Arnold, Mason Township Supervisor. I came up on behalf of Mason Township to thank Jeff Van Bell. He really helped us out, he had a meeting at Antua, had Antua officials and Mason officials in and went over FEMA, I heard out, clarified some questions that we had, because it's FEMA, you better get it right, so Jeff came in and I believe we have it right now. And I'd like to iterate too, what fellow supervisors said about ambulance service. I don't know where this thing is going, I just want, everyone knows where I stand. Mason has service, we're happy with it, we like it, we pay for it and don't mind, we don't want it bothered. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Speaking of going above and beyond, you all just approved the contract for our new administrator, but we would be remiss to not thank the interim administrator who has done so much work for us. As you all know, Jen's been doing two jobs for the last six months and her sacrifice and dedication have really gotten us through a transition that could have been difficult. So now that she's going back to Finance Director, we thought it was appropriate to get her a money tree. And then a gift card from the elected officials, the admin staff and the department heads. So thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen. Speech, speech.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to share a quick reminder about the upcoming CASA of Cass County annual event, which is next Friday, June thirteenth, at Southwestern Michigan College. CASA is celebrating twenty-eight years of advocating for abused and neglected children and this year's event includes a delicious dinner catered by Swayze Cues, the local children's show choir performing arts workshop. They will be performing selections such as Tomorrow by Annie, Space Between from the Descendants movie and Nothing Else Matters, a Metallica cover, so you do not want to miss this event. And of course, we'll have our popular raffle, the grand prize is a Ninja slushy machine, perfect for summer gatherings, the raffle tickets are twenty-five dollars each and event tickets are fifty dollars. You can purchase online or you can reach out to me and directly if you're interested. Your support helps continue this important work for children in our community.
I got to give my donation to you.
Yes.
I'll get it, I'll have it here tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Floor is now closed for public comment. Now, District one, two, three, four, five, six, seven and eight, all right. We are adjourned.